The first order of business is to have a public hearing for the purpose of rezoning. Rezoning from C commercial to R two general residential, Phil's City District, Franklin County property map number one oh four, parcel nine point zero zero in part, location David Crockett Highway West, size approximately two point four nine plus or minus acres, applicant Lynn A. Hellman. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to speak for the rezoning? Anybody in the audience that would like to speak against the rezoning? If not, we'll have a motion from the commission to approve.
Motion to approve.
We'll have a second.
Second.
Any discussion on commission? If not, all in favor, let it be known to say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next order of business is the amendment to the rezoning resolution. The amendment that revises the provisions within Article number eleven floodplain district to comply with the Tennessee state minimum standards and to continue as a member in good standing with an actual floodpainting insurance program. Anybody in the audience that wants to speak to this? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Janet, if you will come forward.
Mr. Chairman, this is actually an amendment to the zoning resolution in regards to the flood maps for Franklin County. They have revised two maps and have done a flood insurance study. These maps will go into effect in November. So I just want to make that clear that that's what that was. Question. Are the numbers in red additions?
The numbers in red are actually, no. The, that's the change. That's the way it will read as a zoning resolution now. If you look at the black.
Okay.
And then the red numbers.
For example, the first number is four seven zero five one C zero zero one zero E. The first red number is the same number, but instead of ending in one zero E, it ends in a two zero E.
That's a different map. If the map, if the number is not in there and it was in there before, it's because there's not a map printed.
Okay.
For that. The two maps that have been revised, there hasn't been any additional map. There's just been two maps that are revised. And you'll see those at the end of that last paragraph after the numbers.
Okay.
And they'll be effective in November.
Any other questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
We'll have a second.
Second.
Any other discussion from the commission? Not all in favor, let it be known to say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll now close our public hearing and move into our regular session. Approval of the minutes from July eighteen, two thousand sixteen, Book thirty-one, pages two sixty-two through four twenty-nine. We have a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
We'll have a second.
Second.
Any corrections? If not, all in favor, let it be known to say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next is the reports of the finance director, report of revenues expenditures June, July two thousand sixteen, and the quarterly report for county general, highway, and board of education. We have a motion to receive and file.
Make motion to receive and file.
We'll have a second.
Second.
Any questions for the budget director? If not, all in favor, let it be known to say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on now to recommendations and communications. Dr. Lons, Director of Schools.
Good evening. I know you have a full agenda, so I won't take just a minute, but I wanted to give you a little bit of an update of where we stand on our capital building program. We heard our, had our first town hall meeting earlier this month. It was better than I expected, but not as well as I would have liked as far as attendance goes. But we did receive some great input and some questions that came out of that town hall meeting that we will actually address on this Thursday. So if you're free, please join us. We will be at South Middle School at six o'clock for our second town hall meeting. At that point, we're going to answer some of those questions that came out of that first meeting. Obviously, there's a lot of discussion right now based on whether we renovate the two existing schools or we consolidate and build one new school. Stanley Bean is our chair of that committee, and so he led the town hall meeting and we collected all that information. We also have a survey link that's on our website, so if you haven't had a chance to complete the survey, it's fairly short and quick, but it gives you an opportunity in the community, an opportunity to provide input as to how they think we need to go, what direction we need to go, and what the benefits of each of those different decisions would be. So I encourage you to provide your input, and if you have questions, we'll be glad to answer those and put that information through the town hall meetings. Our last town hall meeting will be October the thirteenth, and that will be at six P.M. and that will be at North Middle School. And then the intent is that we will get all this information and put it together and we will present it to the board at their work session the first week of November. Do you have any questions for me about that? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lons. Mr. Scott Denton, is he here? He was on the agenda, I don't know what it's about. Okay. We'll move on then. The next is committee and department reports. We'll go through all these reports together. If you want to, want to talk about any one of them, we'll do that after we stop me as we go down through the list and we'll discuss it. Franklin County trustees, interest earned analysis, local options, sales tax analysis, finance committee minutes, legislative committee minutes, annual report, annual financial report for Circuit Court clerk, annual financial report for the Chancery Court. We have a motion to receive and file these reports.
Motion to receive and file.
We'll have a second.
Second.
Any discussion or any question? If not, all in favor, let it be known to say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move now to new business and resolutions. Resolution eight eight dash zero nine one six, amend the general fund budget. We have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
We'll have a second.
A second.
Okay, any discussion? If not, last clerk to call the row.
Barbara Finney.
Aye.
Doug Goodman.
Aye.
David Eldridge.
Aye.
Angie Fuller.
Aye.
Don Culver.
Aye.
Dale Unmacher.
Aye.
Iris Rutter.
Aye.
Stanley Bean.
Aye.
Lisa Mason.
Aye.
Dale Short.
Aye.
Dave Van Busker.
Aye.
Edie Clark.
Aye.
Chuck Steins.
Aye.
Johnny Hughes.
Aye.
Helen Stapleton.
Aye.
Fifteen ayes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, the motion carries. The next is resolution eight B dash zero nine one six, amend the highway fund balance. We have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
We'll have a second.
Second.
If not, last clerk to call the row.
Barbara Finney.
Aye.
Doug Goodman.
Aye.
David Eldridge.
Aye.
Angie Fuller.
Aye.
Don Culver.
Aye.
Dale Unmacher.
Aye.
Iris Rutter.
Aye.
Stanley Bean.
Aye.
Lisa Mason.
Aye.
Dale Short.
Aye.
Dave Van Busker.
Aye.
Edie Clark.
Aye.
Chuck Steins.
Aye.
Johnny Hughes.
Aye.
Helen Stapleton.
Aye.
Fifteen ayes, Mr. Chairman.
Motion carries. The next is resolution eighteen dash zero nine one six, amend the Franklin County Board of Education general purpose school budget. We have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
We'll have a second.
A second.
Any discussion? If not, last clerk to call the row.
Barbara Finney.
Aye.
Doug Goodman.
Aye.
David Eldridge.
Aye.
Angie Fuller.
Aye.
Don Culver.
Aye.
Dale Unmacher.
Aye.
Iris Rutter.
Aye.
Stanley Bean.
Because I am an employee of Franklin County School Board, I have a conflict of interest in a proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and my obligation to my constituents and the citizens and bodies represented, and I vote aye.
Lisa Mason.
Aye.
Dale Short.
Aye.
Dave Van Busker.
Aye.
Edie Clark.
Aye.
Chuck Steins.
Aye.
Johnny Hughes.
Aye.
Helen Stapleton.
Aye.
Fifteen ayes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, the motion carries. The next is a resolution eight D dash zero nine one six, authorizing a multiple year lease agreement. This is on a copier for the Sheriff's Department. Have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
We'll have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have one little question. Could we save money by having the schools and everyone do the copiers all in one big contract?
That's what we're doing. We're in the process of getting them all together. We're about there, aren't we, Andrew?
About.
Yeah, we're just, yeah, that's, before they were scattered everywhere, but we're in the process of getting them together.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, last clerk to call the row.
Barbara Finney.
Aye.
Doug Goodman.
Aye.
David Eldridge.
Aye.
Angie Fuller.
Aye.
Don Culver.
Aye.
Dale Unmacher.
Aye.
Iris Rutter.
Aye.
Stanley Bean.
Aye.
Lisa Mason.
Aye.
Dale Short.
Aye.
Dave Van Busker.
Aye.
Edie Clark.
Aye.
Chuck Steins.
Because I'm an employee of the Franklin County Sheriff's Office, I have a conflict of interest in a proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and my obligation to my constituents and the citizens and bodies represented, and I vote aye.
Johnny Hughes.
Aye.
Helen Stapleton.
Aye.
Fifteen ayes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, the motion carries. The next is a multiple year lease agreement for Northlake and the Board of Education. Have a motion to approve.
Make motion to approve.
We'll have a second.
Second.
Any questions or discussions? If not, last clerk to call the row.
Barbara Finney.
Aye.
Doug Goodman.
Aye.
David Eldridge.
Aye.
Angie Fuller.
Aye.
Don Culver.
Aye.
Dale Unmacher.
Aye.
Iris Rutter.
Aye.
Stanley Bean.
Aye.
Lisa Mason.
Aye.
Dale Short.
Aye.
Dave Van Busker.
Aye.
Edie Clark.
Aye.
Chuck Steins.
Aye.
Johnny Hughes.
Aye.
Helen Stapleton.
Aye.
Fifteen ayes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, the motion carries. Next is the authorizing issue sale and payment of loan notes for solid waste. We have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
We'll have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
What's this called?
The director of, the finance director can tell us.
This is for approval if we need it to do an inter-fund transfer from county general to solid waste until we start getting more tax revenue collections. In all honesty, I don't think we'll have to do it, but with the approval processes that have to be in place before we can actually make the transfer, I'd rather have an approval and then us not use it than not have an approval and go through the proper process. They're just a little low on cash flow until December gets here, when the more, we have more property taxes coming in, that's mostly when the big revenue starts coming in. So it's, it's tight for them, but Billy and I are working together to not spend money unnecessarily and, but you never know with big equipment, if something happens.
But to do that, we've got to get a resolution approved and then send it to the comptroller and get approval, and that takes time.
Any other questions? If not, last clerk to call the row.
Barbara Finney.
Aye.
Doug Goodman.
Aye.
David Eldridge.
Aye.
Angie Fuller.
Aye.
Don Culver.
Aye.
Dale Unmacher.
Aye.
Iris Rutter.
Aye.
Stanley Bean.
Aye.
Lisa Mason.
Aye.
Dale Short.
Aye.
Dave Van Busker.
Aye.
Edie Clark.
Aye.
Chuck Steins.
Because I'm an employee of the Franklin County Sheriff's Office, I have a conflict of interest in a proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and my obligation to my constituents and the citizens and bodies represented, and I vote aye.
Johnny Hughes.
Aye.
Helen Stapleton.
Aye.
Fifteen ayes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, the motion carries. The next is a multiple year lease agreement for Northlake and the Board of Education. Have a motion to approve.
Make motion to approve.
We'll have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is this going to help our community issues?
Excuse me?
Is this tower lease going toward the countywide fire, the issues they've had with communications, and is this part of the process of working toward resolving that?
Actually, the mayor can probably explain it better than I can. Actually, this is a separate thing.
Okay.
That's in the works, but this is separate. But the mayor might want to address that.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
The countywide fire has been, you know, telling us that they needed to have their communications overhauled or upgraded. Is this part of that process?
This, yes and no. This tower is located at Communications Building right there, and they've paid us not much. And they'll be able to put extra microwaves on that side of the hill like that. The tower that we're looking at, at, excuse me, looking at the top of the mountain midway out of that area for Sherwood, then when that's done, we'll have other towers to be updated at the same time. That's what we're planning to do about after the tire parts on the county.
Okay, so this is just going to be that one site?
Not just that one place. However, I've got paperwork on my desk where all county property, cities, commissioners wishes that there's a tower that could be used, say, in Hutter, and that pays five hundred dollars a month for us to put the tower in the county on the county. Is that, did that answer your question?
Yes, yeah.
Any other questions? If not, we're not spending any money, so we're going to have a roll call voting. It's all in favor, let it be known to say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution eight eight dash zero nine one six, creating a budget committee for Franklin County. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
We'll have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I would like to make a statement.
Okay, Commissioner.
This is a bipartisan resolution that is sponsored by myself and Angie Fuller, and I want to thank Angie for co-sponsoring this resolution with me. Currently, the finance committee formulates the county budget, and only four county commissioners serve on that committee, along with the director of schools, the highway department superintendent, and the mayor. This resolution would allow eight commissioners to serve. It would also allow all eight districts to be represented in the formation of the budget. I would hope that my fellow commissioners will vote for this resolution so that we, the rest of the legislative body, can have a budget committee that makes it possible for all commissioners to participate in the budget formation and for all districts to have representation in the process for, in the budget process for our county. The number one job of a county commission is the allocation of county funds. Why shouldn't all commissioners be involved? It makes for a more open process, it ensures checks and balances, and it also ensures a better government. I also want to thank the legislative committee for taking this to full commission, for allowing us to move to full commission, and I hope my fellow commissioners will consider this and let's have a budget committee in Franklin County that we all have voices on and all of our districts are represented. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to add too, the, all the commissioners do have a vote on the budget when the budget is completed from the finance committee. So the challenge to that is, and having served on the finance committee this last year, I feel like I learned a lot, and I, I think when it comes to the full commission, you have an up or down vote versus if you're on the finance committee, you can actually challenge the elected official to go back and sharpen their pencil or whatever it needs to be. So I think while, I've heard a lot of conversation about, we do get to vote on the budget, it's an up or down vote. It's not actually assembling the vote, the budget, so that's my gist.
To, a bit of a correction there, on the county budget, it's not just an up or down vote, it's an up or down vote on the, on the highway and school budget. But when the county budget comes to this commission on the night that we approve it, this county commission can change anything in that budget they want to.
If it's in Evans.
No, no, if it's in Evans.
Yeah, well, that's, I guess I should.
Yeah, it's just likely.
I stand corrected, yes, it is with majority.
Yeah, yeah, we can change anything in the budget with exception of the school budget and highway budget.
With the majority, yes.
Yes, Commissioner.
Well, well, there's still kind of an addition to that, but let me start back. The finance committee does have four commissioners on it. They are four of six members on that committee, so they are two-thirds of the majority. There was some concern about two members being on there who are not commissioners, but again, the four commissioners are the majority. Those four commissioners are selected by this body, no other body, and in essence, they are selected individually to serve on that committee. Now, nominating committee brings forth recommendations, but this group of commissioners can approve anybody or change whatever the nominating committee wants. The finance committee takes all the department individual budgets, examines them, and tries and looks at revenue, projected revenue, and tries to come up with a consolidated budget that is fair and equitable and, quite frankly, balances revenue and expenditures, but we do that with an eye on what this commission wants as a whole. This commission controls that entire process. When it comes to the commission, they can vote to accept that after they have studied it themselves, or they can reject it and send it back to the finance committee, and here's one other add on what we were talking about, or they can reject it and send it to full commission workshop sessions. That was done, hasn't been done the last couple of years because it wasn't being necessary, but it was done three or four years ago. In that, in that session, sixteen commissioners get to ask and evaluate any questions they want. So in essence, the idea of participation, it is absolutely under the control of these sixteen commissioners. It is a very expedient process, it, it, it is, it is efficient, it has worked over the years. To add another committee adds cost, and quite frankly, in my opinion only, it will de-lay the process, and that process is on a tight schedule to get it done by the end of the fiscal year. Again, if it brought value, in my mind, to the whole process, I would consider it, but the commission has always been in control and will continue to be in control, every single member of the sixteen, of the panel, the sixteen commissioners. So I just don't, I believe it's redundant, I believe it's adding cost to the taxpayers that's not necessary, and I do not support it.
Commissioner, could I just add to that? I, I hear what you're saying. It's, it's rare that in one term you would get to serve on the, on the finance committee, and that's, that's, I think, maybe where Iris is going, and I feel the same way, that the representation is for the four selected commissioners that are selected by the nomination committee. And just depends on, excuse me, how the rotation goes on the nomination committee, whether you'll get to serve on that committee or not. There's a good chance in four years, you will never get to serve on the finance committee. And while, yes, the full commission does get a vote, it's regulated by majority at that point, not, in the finance committee, you can, a commissioner can speak up and, and send the, the elected official back to sharpen their pencil or whatever at that point, and it takes a majority when you come to the commission. I, I think it's been rare that we've ever had a full workshop for a finance committee. So my point is, you'll get full representation from each district if we have this budget committee, and the, the cost is about fourteen hundred dollars a year, so it's not a significant cost. We spend that on office supplies in, in about every department in our county, so.
Having served on the budget committee last year, or this, I mean, finance committee this past year, I learned so very much about the budget process, and that's why, after attending a conference in Gatlinburg, I kept hearing about budget committees and I heard nothing about finance committees. That's when I spoke to someone there that encouraged me to maybe pursue these, because it is, like I said, a better form of government when your elected officials, your county commissioners, all have a voice in something as important as allocation of county funds, and also each district being represented. I know there's four people that serve now and they do a good job. I, I think that I did a good job this year. I, I worked hard and was there and listened, but there's so much that you learn and you're, you're subjected to things that you would not know if you just look at the complete budget when it's presented to you. You get it four days before the county commission meeting, so there's not a lot of time for you to ask questions. If these eight commissioners that would serve on this committee, if they would serve for a two-year term, and then they would rotate to the next commissioner in that district for two years, so each commissioner would get a two-year term and four-year period, you would have all of your county commissioners educated as to the budget process. And I just, I personally know that's important because I served, and I, without having served, I wouldn't have known the things that I, I do now about our county system and our budget and how it works. We would continue to have a finance department. That's by Tennessee code. We are just asking, or I'm just asking by this resolution, that we form this budget committee, give these county commissioners the opportunity to be educated, and to also give their districts representation. Instead of four districts representing, let's have eight districts representing.
Any other discussion, Commissioner?
People can sit in on these finance committee meetings, is that true?
Yes, you have no vote though. You have no vote.
Right, 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 but I mean, if you want to learn.
Yes.
My question is, and this is to Mr. Woodall and Ms. Lons, would y'all, if, it seems like the finance committee might become redundant, and would y'all feel left out of the process if this budget committee, I mean, it seems like the budget committee would almost replace the finance committee.
They, they do their own budget, so they have their own budget process.
Okay, I was just curious what they, what they thought of this, or do they not really, you probably haven't had a chance to think about it yet.
Mr. Van Busker is correct. Our, our budget's set by the school board. So either way, it's going to be a thumbs up or thumbs down and come back to the board
Some of us choose to go to meetings and most choose not to go, but you really learn a lot when you go and, and I kept hearing this about the budget, the budget, and I, I didn't know, so I started asking questions and it was recommended by C-Tas and Mr. Charlie Curtis that the counties go to budget rather than entirely finance. I have a problem, finance meets at eight-thirty in the morning. There are some people that still work and they say, well, you, you can attend a finance meeting, if you work, you can't be there at eight-thirty in the morning. And then sometimes it's changed and all the county commissioners are not aware of the time being changed or the date being changed on it, it's just the ones that's on the committee. And when I get the budget on Thursday afternoon and I have to vote on it on Monday night, there's no way I can go over all that whole budget. I mean, I know I may not be the brightest light on the Christmas tree, but I'm not gone out yet, and there's no way I can go over that whole budget in that length of time, so that's why I think it's better to have a budget committee or at least the Finance Committee could at least meet of a night or a time that, that people can be there if they have jobs or, or have to work in order to ask questions, and we've asked for, we've asked for meetings for us to have workshops and that's never happened and.
Commissioner, let me correct you there, I call the workshop meeting every time it's been requested.
We've asked you not on go to have a workshop and.
You didn't ask me, Commissioner. I have called a meeting every time a commissioner has requested a workshop. Any other discussion?
I don't understand why we should have workshops when we can have a budget committee and all the business can be taken care of later. That, and also on these committees, it's by seniority, so it makes all the new people that come on the board, you'd have to be here for quite a long time to ever get to serve on some of the select committees, I call them committees with teeth, and Budget Committee is certainly, the Finance Committee is certainly one of those committees. So, that's another reason that this will be a thorough process to let all the county commissioners have a voice.
How's the vote?
Okay, the question's been called for. The question's been called for, we'll have to call another rule. Questions.
It's not questions, it's state, can you have a roll call vote?
We have a roll call, yes ma'am. Yeah, you can request a roll call, Commissioner. Okay, so a roll call vote has been requested, so we'll ask the clerk to call the roll now. Vote. Aye if you want to form the Budget Committee, no if you don't want to form it. Let me have that clear.
Barbara Feeney.
No.
Doug Goodman.
No.
David Eldredge.
No.
Angie Fuller.
Yes.
Don Colfer.
Yes.
Dale Almacher.
No.
Iris Rutter.
Yes.
Stanley Bean.
No.
Lisa Mason.
Yes.
Dale Schultz.
Yes.
Dave Van Busker.
Yes.
Eddie Clark.
No.
Chuck Steins.
No.
Johnny Hughes.
No.
Helen Stapleton.
No.
Anybody wish to change their vote? Six, four, nine against.
Okay, the resolution fails, so we'll move forward. The next order of business is the transfer of the seven point five-two acres from the County General to the Frampton County School Board. You'll see that in your packet, it's been recommended by the ID Board, this is land out in the industrial park and the school system would like to use it to store their buses on, you'll see that in the written part there, so we have a motion to approve the transfer of this land.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not all in favor, let it be known to say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next is the bond for Larry Hill, the new constable, we have a motion to approve this.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second? Any discussion?
We pay for constable's lives?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, this, we will, this is money that's spent, so we'll ask the clerk to call up.
Barbara Feeney.
Hi.
Doug Goodman.
Hi.
David Eldredge.
Hi.
Angie Fuller.
Hi.
Don Colfer.
Hi.
Dale Almacher.
Hi.
Iris Rutter.
Hi.
Stanley Bean.
Hi.
Lisa Mason.
Aye.
Dale Schultz.
Hi.
Dave Van Busker.
Aye.
Eddie Clark.
Hi.
Chuck Steins.
Hi.
Johnny Hughes.
Hi.
Helen Stapleton.
Aye.
Fifteen ayes, Commissioner.
Okay, the motion carries. The next is a pre-application notification for the Grant University South Airport maintenance. We have a motion regarding, this is not any money that the county will have to spend, it's just a flow-through. We have a motion to receive and file this.
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not all in favor, let it be known to say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next is the grant pre-application notification for the administration of elections. Do we have a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known to say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next is the Health and Education Facilities Board, sixteen dash one, six, zero, two, five, three, thorn from the three million dollar bond, have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Two.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known to say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next is the Comptroller's approval and receive the, the C-T dash zero, two, five, three, thorn from the school federal projects, we should have voted on all that there together, but to have a motion to rec, to approve this, we have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known to say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The next is the Audit Committee Letter in regard to Audit Findings, do we have a motion to receive and file?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known to say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next is Certificate of Insurance for Security Bonds, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? If not all in favor, let it be known to say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on now to the elections. First one is the election of the Chairman of the Commission for another year. The floor is open for nominations.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Eddie Clark as the chairman.
Any other nominations?
Thank you. Mark Rebe, elect by.
Acclamation.
Acclamation.
Motion to elect by acclamation, we have a second to that motion.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known to say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The next is the election of the Chairman pro team, floor is open for nominations.
I nominate Angie Fuller.
Okay. Any other nominations?
Make a motion, she is elected by acclamation.
Have a motion to elect by acclamation, we have a second to that motion.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known to say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next is the election of the Nominating Committee, and you'll see the list there before you because it is a rotating committee. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not all in favor, let it be known to say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
On this election of the Nominating Committee, I've got several of the forms tonight already back, we would like to have them no later than Friday of this week.
Okay.
And I know Barbara's on this committee, we'd like to set a meeting for next Tuesday night.
Tuesday night, okay.
A week from tomorrow night. Now, where y'all want to meet at, you want to meet downstairs, whatever, at what time, y'all can tell me. We do need to make sure we get all of these, the sooner we can get these, better off for us, but we have to compile them and try to go through each committee and do it, so it takes a little time, it's time consuming, so the sooner we can get them from y'all, the better it is for us in office.
Okay, and the meeting will be next?
Tuesday night, what, y'all got time? Six o'clock downstairs?
Five okay with everybody? Five's okay with me.
Five o'clock next Tuesday night downstairs. Okay, thank y'all. I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I know I need to get that done.
Mr. Colfer, five o'clock okay for you?
Yeah.
Mr. Rutter? Okay, so that's, next is the approval of seventeen applicants for notary, have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, we'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Barbara Feeney.
Hi.
Doug Goodman.
Hi.
David Eldredge.
Hi.
Angie Fuller.
Hi.
Don Colfer.
Hi.
Dale Almacher.
Hi.
Iris Rutter.
Hi.
Stanley Bean.
Aye.
Lisa Mason.
Aye.
Dale Schultz.
Hi.
Dave Van Busker.
Aye.
Eddie Clark.
Hi.
Chuck Steins.
Hi.
Johnny Hughes.
Hi.
Helen Stapleton.
Aye.
Fifteen ayes, Commissioner.
The motion carries. We'll now have an entertaining motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
You might have forgotten, September the twenty-second.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, yes.
Is our county commission meeting at Henry Horton State Park for our area and if anybody's interested in going, we usually meet here at four-thirty, five o'clock.
You meet after Annex.
After Annex, I'm sorry, yes, and we usually carpool, we have to be there by six o'clock.
If you don't get there by six, you miss food.
Yeah, the food is free, so Eddie always go.
Commissioner?
I'd like to recognize Billy Anderson. Billy, do you want to tell it?
Come ahead, yes, he's a department head, he'd speak to us. Go ahead.
The state of Tennessee Department of Environment Conservation recently notified our department and was telling us that for last fiscal year, our deferment going, or diversion rate going into landfill was three times what it was the year before, so that's really good news for us. That's what I started with when I got the job was to eventually get to where maybe the trash doesn't pay for itself, but maybe we're at least at a break-even point, so we're getting there. And kudos to the department and all the members that work for me, they're the ones made it happen, so good job.
Just to be, just to be clear, you diverted three times trash from going into the landfill.
Yes.
And due to recycling mostly.
Yes, correct.
So, good job.
I have a question. They're still collecting computers and electronics and that, but at Joyce Lane?
At Joyce Lane.
Okay.
Yes, correct. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.